All right, if none, we'll go ahead and consider those to be approved. Next up are our public hearings. First public hearing be special use permit 2025-22 cannabis retail 1304 Vermillion Street. And we have our staff report from our community development intern Amelia Tebow. It's all yours.
Good evening. So our first public hearing tonight is for a special use permit for cannabis retail sales on behalf of Leonard McQuinn for Kailua cultivation, which will be, is currently being applied for at 1304 Vermillion Street. So here's kind of where it is in location to some other uses. The property is currently owned by Invest Group, and it's surrounded by all other commercial uses. It's currently zoned for commercial. Our comp plan has it staying commercial, so there's kind of no tricky things there. The property is currently, it seems, partially occupied as office space. And it's a little unclear exactly which unit, if it's like, it wasn't listed specifically, and there's currently a business that says it's listed there. So that was like, one of the only things that got a little bit flagged. But it currently meets all of the distancing besides the 500 feet minimum distance from a low potency. The address right below it, like, just south of it, 1310, is H Tobacco, which has a low potency license. We've received notice from them that the, it would be the same owner, and H Tobacco would then cede their license to operate the higher potency at 1304. And that is a lot of what's, the only tricky thing is, is just making sure that there isn't ever an overlap between the two. But they're, they share a parking lot, so there's no parking issues, and it's all commercial. So there's, this one's pretty straightforward besides the distancing with the low potency. And the only other thing to, yeah, to mention with this one is, besides the distancing with that, all the other distancings are followed, with like, the school and parks and all of those other distancing things. And then all of our other general special use permit qualifications are all met in terms of ingress and egress and all of those things that we've gone through with the, all of the other special use permits as well.
All right. Thanks, Amelia. All right, thanks, Amelia. All right. This, that we got handed, is this pertinent to this particular one?
Nope, that one is part of the next one.
Next one, okay.
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, as a reminder, we do have a few individuals that are on Zoom tonight, and as a request to those on Zoom, if you wish to speak during one of the two public hearings we're holding tonight, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Okay, we do. Okay, perfect. And with that, I'm going to go open the public hearing. All right. So, does anybody on Zoom wish to speak? Hit the raise your hand feature.
Okay, I do have one. I will bring Stephen into the meeting.
Stephen, can you hear me?
How you doing? Can you hear me, sir?
Yep, I can hear you.
Hey, thank you so much for allowing me to speak, Council. I actually am representing a client of mine that has received preliminary approval. We seek registration with your group. To my knowledge and, you know, understanding, the city of Hastings is only going to be issuing one license. My question being, is there any consideration, or has there anybody, has there been any thoughts or conversations, maybe more so, about potentially opening that up to more than one license at any given point?
John, I will turn that over to you to answer that question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephen, we've, don't have any official action to do so. We have had that consideration. We may do that in the future, but right now, the ordinance would be one retail permit.
Thank you so much for answering. I appreciate it, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Stephen. Any other hands?
Mr. Chair, I don't see any other hands wishing to speak.
Okay. And, sir, did, did you want to speak on this one? No? Okay. Okay. All right, if there are no additional hands raised, and no one here that wishes to speak, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And with that, we will open it up to commissioners with any questions, comments, discussion.
I just, just had one question, just one question, thank you. So I was just a little confused about, so, the, the business that's, it's already currently in operation that has the low, the low potency, they're the ones making the application for this one? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
That was the understanding that I have gotten, or that they are connected.
They're connected?
John.
Yeah, I just offer some clarification that commissioners, the owner of H Tobacco has agreed and submitted written authorization that if this was to be approved, that he would surrender his low potency license.
Okay.
So that's a requirement that we have under the conditions for.
So he wouldn't, he wouldn't close the whole business, just, just that part of his license?
Correct. That's my understanding. He would, the rest of the license wouldn't have no bearing on the distance requirement, just the low potency cannabis.
Okay, so they're not really affiliated per se, then?
I'm not aware of an affiliation, maybe, but I'm not aware of it.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering. Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Mose. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Halberg?
Amelia, so just, point of clarification, we're not sure exactly which office space this is looking to go into.
The application itself only listed the entire address, and currently, the building is listed as office space, and it seems to have multiple entrances. I personally am unclear if it's actually divided office space, or it's just currently categorized as office space with only one retailer inside. There also was a retailer on the other side of the building with the same address that has closed. So I, it was just unclear if the person who is currently operating a business inside is still operating a business, or if it's close to closing, or if there's more space within this building than is apparent. I just can't, it's, it's a little bit unclear, and it wasn't necessarily pointed out to me that it's multiple units, or it's all one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And planning commissioners, I think that raises a good point there. We will clarify which one, and which portion of the rental space would be used under this, and provide further clarification on that if this does go forward on the location description in the special use permit. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
I guess I'd also say, and also, what the nature is of the other businesses that are in there, whether or not they meet the other criteria for the ordinance too, so.
Commissioners, I believe when we looked at the locational requirements for cannabis sales, everything else was met on the site, I think, except for the H tobacco license, so we have verified that.
Commissioner McGrath, go ahead.
And I would just like to point out on the record that we would then have liquid vape, H tobacco, and then this new business, all within a very close proximity. And I think it's well within Sydney ordinance, but I just would want to clarify that having those three businesses within that was a very close proximity, that that's all within the city code.
And Commissioner, with that one, the liquid vape, I believe is H tobacco, so it's just maybe a different name they're using the outside of the building, but the same location. So there'd be one tobacco shop there, I believe, and then this potentially.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the recommendation for approval will move forward to the city council meeting on August 4th for final action. Thank you.
All right, we are at public hearing number two for the evening. This one is for special use permit 2025-25 cannabis retail at 2324 Vermillion Street. And Amelia, you'll be doing this report as well?
Yes. So here is a second public hearing for special use permit for cannabis retail sales. The applicant, Steve Enzke, Enzveki, for 2324 Vermillion Street. This property is currently owned by Elgin Properties LLC. It's zoned C3 for commercial and is consistent with our comp plan that also continues it as commercial. It is bordered to kind of the northwest-ish to commercial, there's residential to the west and south with Vermillion Street, to the east with commercial slash residential to past Vermillion Street to the east. This site is currently vacant. It used to be the Old Mill Pawn Shop, and it's now currently vacant. It currently meets all of our distancing requirements, so there's no issues with any low potency licenses with this one. And it is, it also meets all of our requirements for a special use permit, parking, ingress, egress, all of those good things. For this one, there has been an update to the memo. When this was submitted, we hadn't received any public comment, and we have since received public comment. We received a letter today, which is the copy I gave to everyone, on behalf of Hastings Commons from Lambert and Associates, which is objecting to the proposed cannabis retail for being pretty close in terms of across Vermillion Street from the mobile home community. And so that's kind of, that's the comment that we have received before we opened up for a public hearing. And, but everything else in terms of the application, special use permit requirements, this application has met those.
Okay, thanks, Amelia. All right. Excuse me. With that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. And turn to John. Quick roll call on Zoom.
Yeah, anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak to this item, please raise your hand, and if anyone in the audience wishes to speak to this item, please come to the podium.
Hi.
Hello. If you could just state your name and your address.
Yes. My name's Dan Madamiro, and I live at 114 West 25th Street. If I had a pointer on the thing, it would be right there, two doors away. I think my concern is, echoes what was said about Hastings Commons. It's right on the corner of a residential street. There are lots of kids in the area. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the business itself, I'm opposed to the actual location of it because of the residential zoning in the area. I have other concerns. I'm not, I'm not, I don't have any illusions of people hanging out in the dark recesses behind the building and, you know, like, hiding behind the weeds outside of a high school or something like that, bringing back my youth. But I do have concerns about the property itself and its accessibility by people that might have other issues about trying to break in. I have concern about the traffic flow, because that has historically been a bit of a problem for people who are heading north on Vermillion and turning left, and they turn left not on the 25th Street, but they move adjacent to it and go into the subway instead, which is a cause for concern, and has been for some time. And I also know that there's always been sort of in the background about traffic flow and the possibility of roundabouts and readdressing the entrance to 316. It's also, I'm concerned about signage and how that blocks visibility for people and being a distraction for those people that want to get there. Thankfully, subway is set back, or it's high enough where you're not seeing, if you've ever been on the 25th Street and you've tried to turn left and somebody has parked in subway, not in a parking spot, they park outward, it's very difficult to see around it. More cars, even though the parking is limited there, I don't, I'm not imagining, you know, gobs of people in the parking lot, but it does make it more difficult for the people that are going up and down 25th Street to access the street safely. And a lot of people use it as a through street rather than for the residents. The other thing, couple more things, this is more like editorial. I don't see what a business like this in this location provides for our community. Where is their responsibility, and the owners of the property itself, toward our community? What are they providing for us, other than one more recreation? I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not opposed to the business itself or the cannabis business at all. I just think that any business like this should be coming forward and saying, this is what we are doing for the community of Hastings. I think that's sort of a symptom of how things tend to be, unfortunately, these days. So, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions for me, I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. John, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do. We do have Stephen on Zoom. Stephen, I'm going to bring you into the, into the meeting. Whoops, I almost did. Let's see. And Stephen, if you can introduce yourself, your full name, your address, please, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, my name is Stephen Lee. I actually lead off for a agent at a client on behalf of Stephen Naski at the said location that we're speaking of just right now. And Dan, one, I just want to say thank you so much for your comments and more so concerns about the, the community, the, the traffic, everything that you talked about, I want to say thank you so much for that. And Council, I would love to either comment whether it's specifically back to some of Dan's concerns and/or just speak directly to you as, as my comments.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, was there more? Go ahead.
No, 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 that was it. I was just asking if I could speak to those, those comments.
Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead.
So, so, one, Council, as far as the, I want to talk about, you know, making, the concerns more about, like Dan said, not the business, but more so the case with the property, and one of the comments being the accessibility of potential risk and/or people breaking in. So my name is Stephen Lee, and like I said, my background is regulatory compliance, specifically within the cannabis industry. One of the things that I specify in is security, and with that being said, the, the city alone, let alone the county and the state, have rules set forth that us as applicants stand have to follow to be in order to even pass. So one of those things that I'm getting at is we would make any modification that was needed to the building to ensure, one, that everyone that was safe around the community could be there, and more so, that our building, to your point, would be essentially new and altered, so there would be compliance with any issue that you may see. As far as the, do we, what are we doing for the community? I would love to speak about that, because one of the things that we plan to do is, we have to unemploy a ton of people when we commence operations, and we are absolutely planning and looking to hire from the city of Hastings itself, and we are given the opportunity to give it some work. You know, we, we really look back at, at the sales that we begin, and that would all be going back to taxpayers' money for the city of Hastings. So we'd be really looking to reinvest into the community itself, and hopefully, you would have better results. And then, you know, basically, as far as parking, we'd be making any modifications, again, that were needed, specifically in order to make sure the safety of the community and the people walking around were, you know, all in a high priority. But short of that, those were my, my only comments that I wanted to make, and I appreciate the time.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen, appreciate it. John?
If there is anyone else on Zoom that wishes to speak to this issue, please raise your hand now. If not, I think the chair will be closing the public hearing.
Okay. No other hands raised?
No other hands.
Okay. All right, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and open it up to commissioners. Commissioner Peters?
John, this might be a question for you, but when I looked at this, and before you spoke as well, I did have questions and concerns about the parking. And I just wondered, for this type of business, how is the parking lot size and number of spaces determined? I know when we've talked about other businesses, it's been like, if there's this many, this large of a seating area, then this many parking spaces are needed. How is it determined for this, and is there eventually a site plan that we look at with this?
Yeah, commissioners, the parking on this site is tough. It's been tough historically, when its past use was a pawn shop, and before that, I think it was auto, auto repair, auto parts shop, excuse me. Generally, those uses are retail uses under the zoning code, and so the parking requirements for those are all similar. Unfortunately, I don't believe that this property meets those parking requirements, but is grandfathered in, because it has been in that situation for, for some time. If this is a situation in which the use was intensifying parking needs beyond other past retail establishments, that would be problematic. In this situation, since it is similar to other retail uses that have been on the site from a parking demand standpoint, it's grandfathered in. But do, but do certainly see the situation of parking being challenging on that site, absolutely.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely. Commissioner McGrath?
Thanks, John. How, how do we know that the parking demand is similar? I mean, the conceptual business model for the, the spaces is very different, and so I, I'm curious as to how we know that.
Sure. Oh, for the actual demand, it's a fair question, I don't know that. But from a zoning standpoint, and what we base our parking requirements on, it doesn't specifically call cannabis uses, it calls out retail and service uses. And so this would be, fall under that retail and service demand.
Hey, Commissioner Peters?
Another question is about the parking, too. I understand that, you know, this is a retail space that has, it's been used for retail before, and that, you know, it should be grandfathered in. Is it, as a planning commission, we are supposed to look at these special use permits and determine, do they, do they fit, do they align? Are we required to grandfather something in if it's a situation that's been challenging or unsafe in the past? Like, to me, this would be an opportunity to, you know, say, this, this feels like the wrong, like, an unsafe situation, is this an opportunity to correct that so we don't have a continued challenge with that space? Or are we somehow required to grandfather it?
Commissioner, it's a fair question. From a parking standpoint, outside of the special use permit, we would be obligated to grandfather the parking in there. But you do raise a good point, that under a special use permit, we can take a look at establishing certain conditions to ensure that any problems that might occur could be mitigated. Parking might be one of those. So I think it would be within the consideration of the planning commission to add a condition, if it so chooses, to address the parking on there. Not that it necessarily would require more, because it's grandfathered in and meets those requirements, but that if parking becomes problematic, if the actual parking demand of this is different than other retail uses, that that could be reexamined.
John, would that be done now, or procedurally? Because right now, we're just looking at moving these into the next phase. This is not an approval or not approval situation, this is just moving into the next phase, or not moving into the next phase. City Council's still going to look at this.
Sure.
So we're going to see it again at some point, correct?
Mr. Chair, I don't think you would.
Or the council will.
The council will, yes. Because one of the questions that was brought up earlier was, would the planning commission review a site plan on this? And the answer to that would be no. The building exists, and there's no modification to it. So unless there was some sort of modification, it would come back to you. But yeah, if, I would suggest if that's something that the planning commission is looking to do, putting a condition on the special use permit would be the prudent thing to do.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Halberg?
My question is, sticking with the parking, who would enforce and look at an increased need? And how do we quantify the increased need? Because I, I don't think this is going to be a case at, at, you know, noon, like a restaurant, everybody's going to come in and make their purchases. It's going to be sporadic. So how do you track the number of people coming through? Maybe I'm not making myself clear, I just, I don't know how we would quantify. And then if we did, how would we go back and change the special use permit? It's not like we can add another parking lot to it. So I think with the idea of the grandfather, I don't want to say we're kind of backed into a corner, but really, I don't know how they would remedy the situation.
And this is dealing with parking, I presume?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, yeah. This situation, the suggestion that you could do would be to put a condition into the special use permit that requires staff to monitor parking on the site to ensure that the site, the parking, the parking provided is adequate for the facility. And, oh, that's very vague language, it doesn't provide us a lot of direction, but provides us enough impetus for us to review that. If it got to a situation where there's a lot of parking beyond that, that it can't handle the site, then it could be something that we could potentially come back, review the special use permit, and make some determinations as to what to do with it at that point.
Commissioner McGrath?
Thank you for the discussion on the parking. I would add that I think in addition to the parking, I think there is, if we're going to put a provision in there that allows us to relook, I would also want to observe any traffic issues on the through street with the, you know, are there increased accidents, are there increased traffic jams, or, I mean, I think it's, it kind of goes beyond pack, parking, that's just a tough spot for a lot of traffic to be going in and out. And, and of course, the residential, people are impacted by that as well.
So, I'm just, understanding, what, what might you suggest on that as far as?
It's probably too much to ask for a traffic study, but at the same time, I agree with Commissioner Peters, that we know there's identified issues, and so I feel like we're perpetuating that, or almost making it worse, and it does feel counteractive or counterintuitive as a planning commission, to know that we, there is potentially issues and, and not acknowledge them.
Yeah, trying to, this one, to me, Commissioner, is a little more problematic to quantify on this one. I mean, the situation we have throughout both sides of Vermillion, south of the river, is a difficulty for anyone to take a left-hand turn off of any home, any business, et cetera, most times of the day. I don't know if this is going to present something that is extraordinarily more severe than the other ones.
tough spot for a lot of traffic to be going in and out and, and of course the residential people are impacted by that as well.
So I'm just understanding what, uh, what might you suggest on, on that as far as?
It's probably too much to ask for a traffic study, but at the same time, I agree with Commissioner Peters that we know there's identified issues and so I feel like we're perpetuating that or almost making it worse. And it, it does feel counteractive or counterintuitive as a planning commission to know that we, there is potentially issues and, and not acknowledge them.
Yeah, trying to, this, this one to me, commissioner, is a little more problematic to quantify on this one. I mean, the situation we have throughout both sides of Vermillion, south of the river is a difficulty for anyone to take a left-hand turn off of any home, any business, et cetera, most times of the day. Uh, I, I don't know if this is going to present something that is extraordinarily more severe than the other ones. I, I guess I'm not quite sure how that would be, how we'd look at that. From a traffic study standpoint, our, when we have required traffic studies to be conducted, they've been on facilities that have had stronger traffic demand than, than this facility would be. So this would be outside of the bounds of what we've asked for in the past for that.
Okay. Commissioner Mols?
Um, well, I know that that whole corridors was, um, reviewed, um, recently and I know that, uh, that's all going to be redone within the next, I don't know what the timeframe is again. It's a couple of years?
Yeah, 27, 28.
Yeah. Um, so I'm, I would assume that that intersection was looked at and there are probably, uh, things that they are doing to that. I'm assuming it's probably only going to be a left or right-hand turn. Who knows? I don't know. I don't remember specifically. I remember seeing some of that. But I'm sure that that, that will be addressed as part of that restructuring of 61 when that's done.
It's a good point, Commissioner. I don't recall specifically if there would be closures that would prevent left-hand turns at 25th Street. I do know throughout the corridor that there are many left-hand turns that are being eliminated.
Commissioner Swardine?
Mine is on traffic related. Um, this letter, I, I want to make sure we are understanding this correctly and I'm understanding this correctly. This is like a large, like a business complaint essentially about not wanting this other business here, right?
Just to provide some context to that, this is the owner of Hastings Terrace, the mobile home community on the other side of the road.
And so this is just them saying they would not like this over here. There is no formal, like breaking of our buffer zones. Like it's not a school. It's not a daycare.
Correct.
This isn't a place that generates those legal buffer zones, just a business that would like not to have this other business across the road.
Yeah, I can confirm commissioners that the requirements for minimum distance that are within the zoning code are met with this business proposal.
Yeah, that's the key thing I think we need to remember is, well, true, a few things I wanted to clarify before we just get on the record. First of all, I know I heard the word council a couple of times, minor, but we're not, we're not city council. We're planning commission. So we're not approving or not approving. We're simply recommending or not recommending that the application move on to the final approval process with city council. So this is not an approval or not approval kind of situation. We don't do that here. It's outside of our scope. Um, speaking of scope, you just mentioned it. You just touched on it. Um, if you look under the analysis under page four, there are five things that these permit applications have to meet and they are thousand-foot minimum distance between retail cannabis uses, 500-foot minimum distance between, uh, from a lower potency hemp business, 500 feet from a school residential treatment facility, uh, 500 feet from a playground, athletic field, athletic court, picnic area, restrooms, pavilion, park building or disc golf. And then a preliminary security plan approved by the chief of police. So those five have been met. I mean, there's no argument there. Um, this letter here is generic and, and I get it, but um, we have liquor stores that you have to be a certain age to buy liquor at and kids walk by them all day long. They're, they live in the area as well. So that's all up to enforcement and the businesses and, and everything else. So there's not much you can, we can't even incorporate that into our decision-making process here because it's outside of our scope one more time. You know, not in my, not in my neighborhood, not in my backyard. That's something that the city council can look a little bit more broadly on if they want to go down that route. So I just want to remind everybody our scope here is those particular planning commission type of, um, requirements, city code and then the applicant requirement. So that's kind of where I am on that. Um, as far as 61 goes, I, I think it's too, too, too early to talk about highway 61 and its traffic. It's the worst it's ever been. We know that, but it's, it's going to undergo a complete re-haul in three years. And yeah, you're right. MNDOT would never do a traffic study on this. It's not, it's not in their purview. This is not a new business. It's not a new development. It doesn't meet the requirements of a complete traffic study. It's just a change in the way, change in businesses essentially. So, um, that's where I am on that. So Commissioner Peters, go ahead.
Um, I just did have a, a question and it was about the mobile home park. Um, when considering that it needs to be 500 feet from a playground, is there a playground that's not a city playground within that and do we have to be 500 feet from it?
Commissioner, I'm trying to remember if the language said public or not. Uh, I know that the language says something pertaining to playground equipment, something direct.
To kids, uh, related to that. Within Hastings Terrace itself, I'm not aware and I'm getting a little, I might be going on a limb here.
It says public.
What's that? It says public? Okay. So it does say public park. So I guess the, the location of a playground within Hastings Terrace, because if there is one, since it's not a public park would be a moot point. So wouldn't be applicable, I guess, is the short answer.
Just one more quick questions about the process. I know that they've had the lotteries. Do we know where, have they awarded any licenses yet or do you know what, where that status is?
Yeah, my understanding is there is about a thousand preliminary licenses that have been issued throughout the state, about eight full licenses. None of those within Hastings that I'm aware of.
So none of our prior applicants either have?
No.
The second round of lotteries, um, for anyone who was, um, not selected in the first set of lotteries, um, that just happened back on the 22nd. Um, and they're only for retail cannabis, which we're looking at. They're only going to allow 150 licenses total um, within the entire state. So there's a few different numbers that like are around in terms of applicants and this and that, but that's the amount that's going to be allowed total during this process. To the way that I've understood it, um, in terms of just this first round and those applications were closed back in March. But this whole process has taken, um, a lot longer than I think they had previously thought. Um, but those, the next step for any of them, hopefully, is that the city will be contacted by OCM when they are getting ready to secure, uh, or grant a license for a business because they need to check with the city to make sure we have granted them the correct zoning. So that would be kind of our first notice that OCM is getting ready to give a license to a business that we have previously interacted with during this whole process.
Yep, and that's good information to pass along. I don't believe that we've been contacted from conversation with the clerk's office in the last couple of days on any other pending retail applications for zoning compliance.
John, including tonight's, we have a total of how many so far?
We have five. So we have three special use permits that have been issued and two pending tonight.
Okay. Thanks.
Just really quick, I just wanted to point out as I read further for a point of clarity. Um, as it relates to the restrictions on page three of the document, it, under letter C, it does say that distance restrictions shall not extend across highway 61 or highway 55, but shall terminate if it intersects with such highways. So I think even if there was a park in the, you know, in that area and if it was public, I wouldn't, my understanding is it would not be applicable.
Good point, Commissioner. Thank you.
This is just a question to clarify my understanding of the lottery. So with this lottery, it's not that they're picking Hastings. They're picking one of the applications from Hastings. So if this one were put right, or, cause so if, if this, if these two special use permits were also approved by the city council, then there would be five that are in that lottery to be picked. And if this particular one was the one from Hastings that was able then to move forward, it would be the, the, the spot, right? So like it might not be, end up being a city council choice of which establish where it goes or would it still?
It's a little bit different on the, on the lottery and the lottery has no bearing to Hastings whatsoever. Uh, entities at large throughout the state are involved in the lottery and they randomly choose, they could choose all five of them from Hastings. They could choose none of them from Hastings. I'm not sure what that would be at this point. So the determination that Hastings has established for, for, let me go back a little bit. You've got the, what we're doing tonight, which is the special use permit, which is zoning compliance for the sale of retail cannabis. You have the Office of Cannabis Management, OCM, which is going through the licensing. They've issued some preliminary, preliminary license on some. I've been made aware that in Hastings, there's, there's a couple that have received preliminary approval. That preliminary approval, I do not believe involves any sort of zoning compliance check because we have not been contacted at this point. So the way our code stands is they would need to get the special use permit, need to get full licensure through the Office of Cannabis Management. And then the first person, first entity to come forward with a registration, which is a licensing effort through our clerk's office, would be issued the full permission to have a retail cannabis, cannabis establishment in Hastings. So it's confusing. It's convoluted and the rules constantly change. So it's, uh, it, it's difficult to keep track of.
Commissioners, any other discussion, questions?
But I am now. Commissioners, any other questions, discussions? Nope. Okay. If anyone's ready, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve, uh, special use permit 25, 25, 25?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I'm just making sure. That was line 25. 20, 25, 25. There we go. Um, with the recommendations from staff, in addition to add a sunset clause that if parking becomes an issue, this is revisited one year after site opens.
Okay. Commissioner Swardine, second?
Second.
All right. Commissioner Brown, second. Any further discussion, new discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Oh, we got one. Oh, I'm sorry. We have one name. So.
One name. Got it. Okay. Commissioner Peters? I will make note of that. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Commissioners, I will forward this recommendation to the city council for final action at the August 4th meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thanks Amelia. Appreciate it. And thank you for coming. There'll be another opportunity again. This goes to, I'm sorry, goes to city council when? Can you repeat that for me?
August 4th.
August?
August 4th.
Fourth. Okay.
Next Monday.
All right. Thank you. All right. Under other actions, we have an accessory dwelling unit discussion.
Okay. Give me one second here. For some reason my mind's going blank. Unless you did something to help me out.
I just put up.
Okay. Well, that's right. So, uh, commissioners, before us, we have Leslie Oberholzer, who is our consultant working on our zoning code update. And as part of that, we've had some discussions on various items that we may look to consider for inclusion within our code. One of these topics deals with accessory dwelling units. So the purpose of tonight's discussion is not to recommend anything at this point, but more for Leslie to provide an explanation and some, uh, some description of accessory dwelling units, how they may be beneficial, issues that you may want to consider prior to adoption if you do consider that, just to provide us with some direction. Uh, if you have questions or need further information, it would be good to ask those questions tonight. Uh, then we can provide that for you in the future. Any topic related to changes pertaining to accessory dwelling units would be done at, at a later time. It would be part of the public hearing process. So with that preamble, I will turn it over to Leslie. Leslie, can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we're good. Thank you.
Great. Um, thank you very much for having me. Um, so as John said, I'm just providing some information for potential discussion, um, on whether or not we should be including this in, um, our draft. Uh, so I just thought I'd start with a little bit of background information. Um, what exactly is an ADU? So we call it, um, an ADU. It's an accessory dwelling unit. Um, they have been called a variety of different things over the years, um, carriage house, coach house, backyard cottage, garage apartment, brandy flat, mother and long unit. Um, they are in, as a use accessory or incidental to the principal use of a house, a residential single-family dwelling unit. Um, so they are meant to be, um, typically smaller than, um, the principal unit of the house. They are a full dwelling unit, so they include full living facilities, a kitchen, a bathroom and a secure entrance. Um, and they must meet the building code because they are a dwelling unit. Um, these are just some examples. Um, I think these are from a blog post called the ADUs of St. Paul and why aren't there? So there's some good examples and these are mostly, I believe, um, showing accessory dwelling units that are in a separate structure. So this slide is looking at, um, where can you place an ADU on a site? Um, they can be, uh, newer converted, um, from existing floor space and they could be located in a separate accessory structure. So an accessory use within an accessory structure. So here you're seeing the principal house with the principal use of a single-family unit and then an accessory structure with an ADU inside it. Um, you could also have a principal structure that has either an ADU in a roof, in, um, the attic space or up, up in the roof or somewhere, um, within the principal structure. Often times they're in the basement or in an attic space, but it could be a portion of any floor. Um, and then there are often additions to the principal structure, which just means it becomes part of the principal structure and it's just in a wing of the principal structure. Um, in some ways, they are sort of considered to be a little bit more invisible in the neighborhoods when they're included within the principal structure. Um, they often work really well in older neighborhoods with alleys, especially when they're a separate, um, accessory structure or backyard cottage, we often call it. So there's a whole host of reasons for allowing ADUs in a, within a community. Um, many people consider them to be, um, what they call gentle density because you're adding a unit in probably to the rear of, um, an existing house, whether in an accessory structure or attached to the back of the house. Um, and so they're not as visible. So it doesn't tend to affect the neighborhood character quite as much. Um, they do support aging in place. Um, a lot of times what we hear are people building an ADU um, or creating an ADU on their site to move into the ADU and then rent out their house. Um, a lot of times it happens between family members. Um, but this is also a way to perhaps address affordability or maintenance on a house by bringing in some rental income, um, to the property. Um, and then finally, um, just from a kind of smart growth perspective, um, it is an exist, uh, very efficient use of existing infrastructure. So, um, streets and such, um, adding just that additional unit, um, which also adds a variety of housing types because it's a smaller unit, um, within a principal structure. Um, there's just a whole host of reasons, um, for allowing ADUs. Um, there are quite a few, uh, documents available. Um, the AARP has a whole document on um, accessory dwelling units and how you could use them and how you can help pay for your retirement through them and so on. Um, but there are a lot, there's a lot of information about how they can help, um, different people throughout the community. So, um, just to look a little bit about where in Hastings they could occur. Um, I do want to point out that within your RT zones, which are these kind of olive-y colored zones. So, um, in the old Hastings neighborhood, um, and the kind of existing, um, older sections of the community, two units are already allowed. Um, you could have a duplex or you could have an ADU already, um, within those, um, within the structure of the principal house. Um, but the other zones, uh, ADUs are not currently allowed. So all of the, um, what we're calling, um, in the proposed zoning, uh, the suburban zones, those currently do not allow ADUs. There are a lot of different ways that we can regulate ADUs. Um, so in the RT zones, one of the things that we might do is allow for an accessory structure to incorporate an ADU, to have that second unit in that separate structure. Um, within some of the other zones, um, we could look at Um, within some of the other zones, um, we could look at perhaps limiting, uh, the ADU only within the principal structure, so as to consider that those more suburban, um, residential lots typically don't have, um, an accessory garage, um, so it's not really typical of their building form. Um, and so what you could do is just say that ADUs are allowed, but they must exist within the principal structure. You can also limit, um, the second door that's needed, um, from being visible from the street. Um, you can manage the parking, um, in different ways. Um, so, what you see on the right-hand side of this slide is what we would typically incorporate into, um, ADU regulations. Um, one would be that they would, um, only be allowed one ADU per lot, um, that off-street parking spaces need to be provided for the ADUs. Sometimes we give them a break and say they only need to provide for one, um, that the ADU is limited to no more than some size, eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet seems to be really common, um, or fifty percent of the floor area of the principal structure, whichever is less. Um, requiring owner occupancy in either the principal structure or the ADU, so that somebody can move into the smaller unit and, um, rent their house if they want to stay in the neighborhood. Um, but then there are a lot of other design standards that we can address, such as, as I said, the door location, um, if it's a separate structure, um, what kind of materials are being used and how it, um, matches or works with the principal house. Um, there are, uh, several, uh, case studies for ADUs. Um, this particular one is called the ADU Idea Book for Midcentry Homes. Um, it was developed in Minneapolis, um, by an architect and, and some other folks who were just looking at costs associated with ADUs. Um, especially for ADUs that are separate structures, they are very expensive. Um, and you won't see, you know, I think people thought originally that when we started opening up zoning and allowing for ADUs throughout, that there would be just this, um, you know, tons of new ADUs being developed. Um, and just because of the costs associated with them, um, especially in the Midwest, um, we haven't seen a ton of them being, uh, developed. Um, so you can see from this that, um, to do, uh, a separate wing or an addition onto a house is the least expensive. This particular one, case study F, is estimated cost is seventy-six thousand. Um, to do a separate, um, backyard cottage or a separate accessory structure, it's more like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it's very expensive. Um, so I just want to kind of point out some of the, the number of, um, ADUs that are around, um, the Minneapolis-St. Paul area or region. Um, there are quite a few in Minneapolis, I think there's been quite an uptake in Minneapolis. St. Paul has, has multiple, um, but most of the surrounding communities don't have as much. There was an article that John just sent me today where I'm seeing more than what I showed here, um, on the slide, but again, it's, you know, it's three to five within, um, a whole county area, they're not a lot. Um, but it is something that we have been incorporating into almost every zoning code that we've written, um, actually every zoning code that we've written recently. Um, it is something that people are thinking about and they just don't want to have that barrier, um, in place. So, that's all that I have.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that. John, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't know if I've got too much more to add to that. Purpose again of tonight is to ask questions of Leslie on her knowledge of, uh, the ADU information that she's presented here. Uh, if there's specific questions later that you'd like us to answer, we can come back with more information. Uh, if there's any certain direction that you may be ready to grant tonight, and I understand that if that's not the case, that's not the case, we're not looking to vote on anything, but if you want to enkle a direction in which we should go, is this something we should explore more? Is this something that, uh, would not fit within the city? Uh, we're certainly happy to respond to whatever direction you give us. Thank you.
All right, thanks, John. All right, Commissioners, open up for discussion.
I have a question.
All right. Commissioner McGrath.
Uh, actually, a couple of questions. Does a unit, um, that may technically include another living space, so like a kitchen, a bathroom, a second kitchen, a second bathroom, a lower level bedroom, let's say these were all in the lower level, it could potentially be an ADU, but it's not being occupied by another family, would that have to be recorded as an ADU? Or what is the trigger for like, okay, now it's an ADU?
That's a really good question, and it's actually one that we've just been discussing. I think it would be a question for your attorney. I would not consider it to be an ADU if it was, um, simply built in by the same family. Um, however, some attorneys, uh, believe that if it is a single-family dwelling unit, that it shouldn't have a full set of, um, living arrangements, um, kids, a separate kitchen, a separate door, um, completely separate from the rest of the unit. Is, is that what you're asking?
It is, um, yeah, it's interesting, because I actually, I mean, I'm familiar with a lot of homes that have that, that's just occupied one, by one family. Um, and then I guess I just would follow up by saying, to me, it feels like an ADU within an existing dwelling feels different to me than an ADU, which is an additional structure on a property. And so I was just curious to know if cities have handled those as separate, with separate approaches, because they do to me feel very different. Um, as a neighbor, am I, you know, would I know that I'm allowing a second building to be built versus a, a second dwelling within existing, I hope that makes sense, but I'm just wondering if, if you've seen that come up as a topic and if that's been discussed and handled.
Yes, I have, um, and that was what I was referring to, um, with limiting it to within a principal structure in the more sort of suburban zones, um, of the community, where it wouldn't be sort of changing the, uh, overall kind of structure of the lot as much. Um, and the principal structure is also limited in terms of how much coverage it can have. Um, so just making sure that, you know, we're sticking with the kind of character of the neighborhood and not affecting the adjacent neighbors, um, while still being open to allowing for this extra unit, um, I think is important. Um, so the separate accessory structure in the rear is, um, is definitely, um, similar to an accessory garage, um, and so in the community or the neighborhoods that have those as kind of part of their physical form, um, that's typically where we would allow this to occur. But we can address it differently if, if you wanted to decide. I, I will also say that there are different sort of levels that we can address, and, and what you might think about doing, um, should this be a policy, should this be something that you want to pursue, is to maybe take a step in and allow it to be, to occur in certain situations and maybe put, put some more parameters on it, um, that could then be removed after revisiting it after a couple of years. Um, that is definitely how most of the zoning codes that we've written, um, over the past, I would say probably seven or seven years started out, and now we're, we're removing many of those, uh, requirements and kind of opening them up a little bit more. Like, for example, they used to require owner occupancy in the principal unit, um, and as times have changed and people have started talking about it, now we typically only require owner occupancy in either the principal or the accessory dwelling unit, just as an example.
Commissioner Moles?
Uh, I'm an appraiser by trade too, and so we run, we run across this issue a lot, and it really comes down to the zoning, what the municipal overriding zoning is, if somebody does have a second kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom in the basement, if the, the current zoning does not allow it, I don't, we, I don't call it an ADU, it's just a, uh, a wet bar or a mother-in-law suite per se, especially if it's connected inside of the building, that's, that's a whole different entity. Um, you know, we'd have to discuss whether or not these ADUs could or should be completely separate, or if they have a connection interior, is that going to be a different entity as opposed to, you know, a, you know, a quote-unquote duplex where it's two completely separate entities with two different addresses? Does the ADU, um, have a separate address? Is it, um, you know, those type of questions, there's a lot, there's a lot that you need to think about when it comes to this, because it really can change the dynamic of a neighborhood as well.
Commissioner Peters?
Um, I'm, I love this as a concept, I think it's a really creative use of space and, um, yeah, I think it's a creative use, uh, use of space. Uh, the question that I have for it is, are you noticing, or could this be something where, um, an ADU would be used as like an Airbnb? And have, have there been ordinances in place to allow or not allow that? Because I think that's a different thing than, um, having someone that's living there permanently.
Completely, um, we just, I could adopt it where the ADUs, uh, will be, or well, actually, we did revise it, but, um, near short-term rental allowed within the ADU. So we can, we can exclusively say that.
That they would be allowed or wouldn't be allowed?
Would not be allowed.
Would not be allowed, okay. Just wanted to make sure we, because I had the same question she did. It's exactly my question, um, you know, because what's, so if I, if I, if I buy a six-hundred-and-fifty square foot home on Amazon, have it delivered in two weeks and plop it in my backyard, that's an ADU. Right? But if I take and knock out a back wall on the house and build a six-hundred-and-fifty square foot addition, ADU?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if it's separate and separate living quarters, and you're, and you're leasing it, yes.
I'm not leasing it, just adding on to the house for a family member.
Oh. Again, I, I would ask your, uh, city attorney how they would interpret that, if it is a completely separate dwelling unit. Um, I think it, it really, if you're not leasing it, I don't think that it's an ADU. I think that it has to be leased in order to be considered, I think that's the use that we're talking about, separate dwelling unit.
Okay, so leasing, okay. That's the key point is the leasing part. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sweeney?
So, anytime these ADUs are built, they're still subject to our normal zoning codes, our normal density, our normal, like, this is how much yard you have to have versus just, like, you can't just build a huge ADU that takes up your whole yard and now it's practically a whole nother address. That's not allowed, there's still normal, like, you still have to have so much space between you and the next neighbor, and you can't take up your whole yard of building essentially, right?
Yeah, Commissioner, we, the zoning regulations we have in place pertaining to the number and size of accessory buildings, if this was a detached ADU, would still be in effect here, so that would limit the, the size. Plus, I think with some of the ADUs, you generally have a, a top end, I think what's being suggested here is eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
Okay, I think this is a really cool idea, as long as, like, I don't care if my neighbor builds a back building or a side building, as long as, you know, our houses don't feel insanely close anymore, or, I think that that's kind of a fun way to use our space in our growing community.
I would also say there, um, there's certain, there's certain neighborhoods and certain developments that have restrictive covenants that we have to take into account too, that some don't allow accessory buildings or detached buildings, that type of things too. So I don't know if an ordinance by the city would circumvent those or not, and that's something we'd, I don't know if the attorney would talk about or not.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, based on those type of situations in which private covenants offer more restrictions than the city code, the private covenants would take precedent over that. I, in, in particular, in the Walin Development and fencing. Fencing's aren't, fencing's not allowed within the Walin Development, uh, so, but it is allowed within the zone, in the Walin Development. So it's one of those things that, when those come through, we're cognizant of and a, ask if they have any permission from the association to do it. So it's, we do have those situations that come up.
Commissioner Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, it, it is a cool concept. I currently live in a home that has a mother-in-law apartment built onto the side that my parents built back in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, it, it's a fantastic option for families, especially with the raising costs of long-term care, assisted livings, what have you. So I guess I would like to see further discussion around this and how we could possibly adapt this into Hastings for families moving forward.
Excuse me. Okay. Commissioner LeBron?
One question I had, Leslie, so you flashed up for a little bit there, um, kind of the breakdown of different form factors, and then some high-level costs associated with them. I was wondering, um, do you have any idea kind of what the cost breakdown is for those? I mean, obviously, there's, there's, you know, some size considerations, just as far as construction materials, um, you know, just overall size to build it in general, um, but I was also wondering, kind of on the city's end, uh, would we treat this differently than say like a new build home as far as permitting and some of the, the development fees, the sewer and water access fees and things like that? Um, would these be exempt? Would we have some separate category for these? Basically, I also agree with kind of the, the general tone here that I think this is a good thing, a good way to give people flexibility with the property that they already own, um, you know, with changing family sizes and styles, it just gives people, you know, that nice potential if you can do that, either for a older parent or children or whatever, right? Um, and I'm just wondering what the city could do to, um, I guess, help people out as much as possible and not make barriers, you know, allow this in the zoning code, but then cause barriers that make it unfeasible. You know, I'd like to see these be as feasible as possible for people within the amount of control that we have, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sweeney, do you have anything? Yep, okay. Commissioners, any other discussion? Well, good discussion. Um, yeah, I think, I think it does require just a little bit more thought process, you know, we wouldn't want to do anything tonight because she brought us from, Leslie brought us from really good points. Is there possible to get that presentation sent out to us as well?
Yeah, Leslie, you be able to send that to me? And I'll pass that along to the Commissioners.
Yeah, because I'd just like some time to study it, you know, a little bit beyond here and just do some research and some due diligence and come back at a separate meeting and pick it back up again.
So, from the comments and discussion I'm hearing from the Commissioners tonight, it, it sounds like this is something that may be on the table for consideration. Uh, there's certainly questions that you'll have when you take a look at any specific piece of legislation we're looking to adopt. So, we'll continue to explore this for inclusion and have more information brought forward to you in the future.
Appreciate that.
Right, Leslie, thank you so much.
Thanks, Leslie.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. All right, thanks, John, and next is, um, other business.
Other business, well, uh, we haven't met for a couple of weeks here, the cannabis special use permit we had the last time we met did get approval by council, it's one of the three that have been approved, so we'll continue on down that road. The next meeting we have scheduled is August eleventh, and I'm happy to say we have something related on that meeting, it's not cannabis for a change, we do have, do have one low potency cannabis app, application on there, so we will consider that, and also I think a site plan for, uh, new Chase Bank in the parking lot over by Cub. So we will have those two things for sure, maybe one or two other things on there for the eleventh.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have anything to add? All right, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right, Commissioner Moles moves to adjourn, second. All right, second by Commissioners Sweeney, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.